Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning. Welcome to the county commission meeting. Today's date is October 26th. Starting to feel a little bit like fall, and I think in about seven weeks, the days start getting longer. So, something like that anyway. So, something to look forward to. All right. If you have a cellphone, you may want to set it to silent. If you need a listening device, ask Tyler over in the corner. And the meeting documents are on the end of the dais by Commissioner Heiburger. And they're also available any day during business hours in the auditor's office. Call our meeting to order and look for a motion to approve our agenda.
So moved.
Second. Bender.
Motion of second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. We have our commission meeting minutes for October 19th, 2021, for your review and approval.
Make a motion to approve. Bender.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Bills to be paid: $1,326,210.34.
Pay the bills.
A second motion.
Comments, Commissioner?
Today's bills include $196,000 to Metro 911, Metro Communications. We have $700,000 in our building expenses for highway and the extension building. And otherwise, it's, I guess we had $30,000 for an explorer vehicle for the jail. If you deduct those, our bills are pretty modest this week.
A lot of one-time anticipated bills, so, yes. All right. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. We have reports from the Minnehaw County Abandoned Cemetery report for September 21st. Moving on to personnel actions. Look for a motion to approve routine personnel actions.
Make a motion to approve the routine personnel actions?
Second.
Motion of second by Heiburger. All those in favor?
Aye.
Sec. I'll oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Look for a motion to approve our health and dental premiums, but first, we're going to hear a little bit about it before we look for a motion. Good morning, Carrie.
Good morning, Carrie, from Human Resources. I'm coming before you today with good news. We've conducted our annual review of our health and our dental premiums and believe we can go with more of a modest increase than we budgeted for. So, if we were to walk you through some of that information, let's start with the dental insurance. These slides you're really familiar with. You see the same format each year. For the dental plan costs, you're seeing a summary of what our costs have been since 2015 to 2020, and where we're at 2021 to date. And then the annualized line, of course, is what we're anticipating the cost to be by the end of the year. If we go down just a little bit further, what I'm budgeting next year as far as the claim increase is about 10%. That's where we have averaged for the last three to five years, so I think it's a good estimate to use. We're not expecting any administrative fees, so with that, we're expecting our costs to be around $488,000 next year. Of course, this is just an estimate. We won't really know for sure, but with that, we'd have monthly expenses of around $40,720. If we do a 5% increase, we'd be at $40,971, which would be enough to cover our anticipated dental increases. No plan design changes, so we haven't calculated or included anything for that. Any questions on the dental side? For health insurance, we are planning a couple of changes for the plan design itself. One of the most important things is to try and keep deductibles fairly low and our co-pays fairly low, so we're not making any changes there. What we're looking at is a small change for the in-network individual out-of-pocket maximum from moving from $1750 to $2,000. And then, most of the change is really focused here on out-of-network. And the goal, of course, is to incentivize our staff to stay within the network where possible. These amounts that we're proposing we move to is the $4,500 for individual and $9,000 for family are very much in line with what you'd see in benefit surveys, if still not fairly generous. The other change that we're looking at is a specialty pharmacy co-pay increase from $125 to $150. Again, that's more in line with what you would see. And this stress here is no changes to deductibles or co-pays. We go down to what we anticipate our costs to be. For those of you who have been on the commission for a while, which is really all of you, you've known that we've had kind of a bumpy past couple of years since about 2017. What you're seeing in the health claims column is a summary of our total costs for health claims after stop-loss reimbursements were received. We've had a really good year so far. You can see that we're currently at $2.3 million in claim costs. We ended last year at about $3.4 million. The line where I would normally annualize the cost, you'll see we've got $3.5 million shaded in pink. And the reason is, I did not annualize our costs to come up with that figure. I'm afraid if I used that, we would trend lower than what could potentially be the case, because we still do have some individuals on the health plan with more serious health conditions. So, what I'm using is a figure that's more in line with what the last 12 months of our experience has been. For projecting for 2022, I'm using a pretty conservative estimate for trending. Medical trend tends to be closer to 7.5. I'm using 10% because, again, we've had a couple of rough years. If we assumed a 10% increase in health claims and prescription claims, 20% for our stop-loss premiums, which is in line with what we've seen recently, and 5% for administrative fees, which is about the only thing that we know for sure, we would end up with projected monthly expenses of about $622,000. If we do a 5% premium increase, we'll be pulling in $629,000 in revenue, so I really think the 5% should be adequate. Again, we've had some bumpy years, but it's looking good so far, and I don't want to overextend. Want to try and keep premiums affordable, so the recommendation is 5% on both. And then, if you scroll down to the next page, you'll see what kind of impact that actually has on employees as far as their per pay period increase. And just a quick note that we still have 75% of our employees on our health plan, so I think we're offering a good benefit. Any questions on the recommendations?
Commissioner Bender.
Yeah, I don't really have a question. I think we've all had an opportunity to visit with you about these and kind of work through the numbers and spend a little time with them. But I just want to thank your staff and you. I mean, I know this keeps you up at night sometimes. And, you know, we have a health plan because we want people to use it, but that utilization does drive our costs. And I mean, we're thankful that we had it so far. We're having a good year this year, and we certainly do. I'm very supportive of trying to keep the premiums as low as possible in a responsible way so that we are able to continue this great benefit for our employees.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
I concur. Long conversations with Carrie about this and where we could be or should be. And, you know, a lot of times, it is, you know, we're giving our best guesses what's going to happen. And historically, you've shown that you've been a pretty good guesser, so, good job.
Well, fingers crossed.
Yeah. All righty. Commissioner Barth, comments? No? Okay. Look for a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve, Bender.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. All right. Thank you, Carrie. Applications for abatements, none. Notices and requests, none. Planning and zoning notices are none. We do have a petition for compromise of a lien, DPNO 46282. Good morning, Melinda.
Good morning, Commissioners. The requested action today is to consider a motion to compromise and release the lien in full with payment of $8,000. The petitioner entered into a lease agreement with option to purchase on November 22nd, 2017, for a term of two years, which ended December 2019. But having filed bankruptcy, he wasn't able to purchase the home at that time. The landlord continued the tenancy relationship and apparently extended the option to buy. The petitioner is now in the process of purchasing the home he is leasing for $87,500 and is expecting to close on November 5th, 2021, but has discovered that the lien exists in his name. He explains the circumstances leading to the lien fees and includes a list of expenses to show that he's invested his own money in making alterations and improvements to the property with the expectation of buying it one day. He is currently employed and provided two recent paychecks showing an average net pay of $700 a week. His 2020 income tax indicates wages of $38,445 with a refund of $1,534. The financial information within the application, he includes an income of $38,000 with liabilities totaling $28,123.76 and assets of $24,893. He is available to answer any of your questions.
All righty. Any questions for Melinda? Okay. Now would be the opportunity for the petitioner, if you would, anything you'd like to add or available for questions? You don't have to introduce yourself, say your name, but if you just want to speak up? Okay. So, available for questions if there are any? Okay. I'll turn it to the commission. Commissioner Heiburger.
So, he's offered to pay $8,000 towards this debt, which would be more than covering his legal fees and partially would cover all of the rent, poor relief expenses, and then cover some of the medical expenses that were on that. But what I was noting is it's more than 20% of his total income for a year, and I really don't want to see him back in our offices asking for more poor relief, because we just strapped him and now he's trying to make it. Our goal here is to get him on the tax rolls and paying property taxes. And so, I'm just going to float a motion that we maybe take $7,000 instead of the full $8,000 with the hope that he is able to pay that money right away and move on with his own life. So, that would be my motion.
So, we have a motion. Look for a second.
I'll second that.
Okay. Discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I guess, is there a timeframe where that would have to be paid, Cindy? I mean, is it like...
Well, I think we could make it timeframe of a year. I thought that that was just the standard, but evidently, it's not unless it's a part of the motion, so I would add that.
Ask the applicant for a moment. Would you be able to pay that today? When's the closing on this?
November 5th.
Next Friday.
So, I guess I would suggest we give November 4th as the date it needs to be accomplished.
If we do that, then what's it going to jump back up to? To the $8,000 or back up to everything?
No, to your, well, yeah, otherwise, we would leave it intact.
The whole entire lien?
Yeah.
So, are we making an alternate motion?
I'm going to keep my motion at $7,000 in one year to pay.
In one year. Okay. Is that your second?
Can I ask a question? So, if we do that, we release the lien, he doesn't pay in a year, then what happens?
It goes back to the original.
But it's just against him, and now we don't have any, now we don't have any real estate to secure our debt.
But he's just renting right now.
There isn't any real estate.
That's right. Yeah.
Yeah. So, we have no real estate anyway, so...
The problem, Mr. Chairman, is that if we release the lien and things, as Jean pointed out, and things go forward, then we don't have any hold. So, I think we do need to have November 4th as a date.
The lien is not released unless he pays, and so, he's got to pay before that point anyway.
Right. Does the state's attorney have an opinion?
He went like this.
Let's do that for the record.
Is there a specific question?
Well, the question is, does it have to be paid by, before the closing or not?
Mr. Chairman, for the audio record, Eric Boggs, State's Attorney's Office. My recommendation, if you're going to proceed in this manner, is that, yes, that $7,000 would need to be paid before closing. I would, just based on past logistic problems, suggest that you put a deadline of the end of this week rather than the 4th, because closing process itself will need to be updated and changed, and that's the first few days of next week. So, if you wait till the 4th to have it paid, that leaves him precious little time to adjust and a closing agent to adjust documents for closing. So, it'd be better to have this done this week, and then he'll know whether closing will happen next week or not.
Just for a point of order, you withdrew your second, so the motion's going to die for lack of a second. And we're going to look for a second, alternate motion.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
If the lien is not paid, no matter what the, I mean, if we set a timeframe on it, if the lien is not paid, it goes back to the original amount?
That would be correct, yes.
So, if we set the lien payable within one year, if he doesn't pay by November, no, by the end of the week, he loses the property. It still gives him a year to pay for it, to try to work something else out. Am I wrong? I know I don't have a lack of a second. I'm just trying to understand.
Well, I'm not, at this point, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. I should go back to you. Whether or not I understand what your motion and...
The lien is not compromised unless he pays, no matter when he pays.
So, you're not asking for a payment, you're asking for the full amount?
No. If I make the motion for $7,000, as long as he pays it in my, within a year, then, if he doesn't, put it this way. If he does not pay it, it is not compromised. I mean, the lien doesn't go away. The lien has to go away in order for him to close on the house. And so, in order for the lien to go away, we have to waive it. And so, we can't have it spring back up to life later. I think that's the issue that we're dealing with.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for the applicant. Sir, what would work for you? We'd like to have this resolved before you close.
So, if I'm understanding all the conversation and our legal counsel, if we compromise the lien for $7,000, as soon as he pays it, it's gone.
Right.
And it's in his benefit to pay it. The sooner, the better. So, we don't really need a time specific on it. We just compromise the lien for $7,000, and if he pays it, he's taking care of it. He can close. And if he doesn't, it's not our problem anymore.
That was my point. You did a better job of explaining it. The only reason I put a year on it is because if he just decides not to pay, then it goes on in perpetuity at that $7,000, and I feel like we're giving him a deal. So, that's why I put the year on it.
Oh, I see. He could pay any time, $7,000, but we don't charge interest anyway, so I'm going to look for a motion.
I would make a motion to compromise the lien at $7,000.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion.
Again, without any time limit.
Yes.
Okay.
Other discussion. Okay. Roll call vote.
Bender.
Aye.
Heiburger.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye. Motion carries. Four to zero.
Thank you very much.
Flag.
Okay. We are now at the opportunity for a public comment. Anybody here like to address the commission about a non-agenda item? Now is your opportunity to stand up and be heard. Moving on, we have our presentation from Forward Sioux Falls. Mr. Lynch, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mike Lynch, Executive Director of Investor Relations for Forward Sioux Falls. And two years ago, I think, my presentation took 20, 25 minutes last year. I think I got it down to 15. I promise I will be 10 minutes or under this time, so appreciate the opportunity. Let's see. Should I advance or...? Okay. Yeah. Why don't you let me advance here? Okay. So, Forward Sioux Falls partnership between the Development Foundation and the Chamber started in 1987 to lift up the area's economy. Our purpose statement is the premier economic development program in Sioux Falls. Forward Sioux Falls helps advance our region's economy through vision, strategy, and collaboration. We are governed by the Joint Venture Management Committee, which is comprised of the Executive Committee of both the Chamber and Development Foundation, along with up to five at-large members. We do have a yearly audit, and we have quarterly meetings and as needed. Current Chair is Chris Ekstrom. This slide is put together by our campaign management corporation, which is NCDS out of Atlanta. And what it shows is their clients, which have numbered over 100 over the past two to three decades. Their clients and the public-private funding comparison, in the majority of cases, within their clients, 61% are publicly funded programs within those economic development corporations or chambers. In Sioux Falls, for Forward Sioux Falls, it's really just flipped. It's almost 80% private funding from our fundraising and 21% public. This slide shows the history of our programs. We just finished our eighth campaign, Forward Sioux Falls 8, which runs from 2021 to 2026. And we had a $15 million cash goal, and we surpassed the goal by $1.2 million plus we have in-kind. And you'll notice in each of the previous seven campaigns, we either met or exceeded goal. So, it's a testament to this community and their understanding of how important Forward Sioux Falls is. This slide shows the, what we feel the return on investment will be over the next five years, both from the public and private sectors, the influx of people we believe that will move to our community as well as new economic growth from companies moving here. We do have a dedicated program to assist existing businesses. I know many times, especially within the Development Foundation, people may think that it's only about attracting organizations, and while that is a major component, it's not the only component. So, we have a designated business expansion and retention program where staff from the Development Foundation will visit with organizations, current organizations within the Sioux Falls area and assist them with different opportunities that they have, maybe projects, questions that they have, and just, you know, really are there to fill in the blanks for those types of situations. This slide shows the dedicated effort, again, from the Development Foundation to attract businesses. And I think it's important to point out that, you know, there's always been a consistent, dedicated effort to attract both people and businesses. And we feel that if we look at the job growth and population growth, they're essentially equal over the past several years, so we believe that this will continue. Also, driven through the Development Foundation is the attraction of talent, both from within the Sioux Falls area and outside of the Sioux Falls area. And when we think about the inception of Forward Sioux Falls back to 1987, it really had two purposes. It was to diversify our economy and to take Sioux Falls from, at the time, what was a more of a regional hub in 1987 to one of more national acclaim. And I think, especially in the last 10, 15 years, we've really started to make some progress on that. So, there is, and I'll go to this next slide here. There's a lot of momentum within the K-12 school district as well as higher ed to make sure that we engage those students, help them understand the benefit of living and working in our community, and then attracting those students at current about 150 miles out. But as we go along in our program, that radius, that range will continue to expand. Just highlighting a few of the other initiatives baked within Forward Sioux Falls, of course. Foundation Park, and that area just continues to flourish. Discovery District is another longstanding initiative, biotech and medical. And then, business advocacy, that's also been a longstanding program initiative within Forward Sioux Falls. And I know that within the Chamber office, Deborah Owen, Justin Bentez primarily are engaged with you as the commission, with city councilors, with the state legislature, and with the congressional delegation, just to make sure that the interests of business are well communicated. They are lobbying on their behalf. And then, some other of the major Forward Sioux Falls initiatives that are funded. Again, just looking for that collective impact. Sioux Empire Housing Partnership, the Young Professionals Network, Startup Sioux Falls, and Sioux Falls Thrive. We always have a number of new initiatives within each program, within each five-year program. And these, and I'll just highlight a couple of these. Career Connections is one that is within the K-12 school system, primarily focusing on juniors and seniors who are high-risk and high potential, and connecting them with businesses in Sioux Falls. It was piloted a couple of years ago and really looking to expand that program even more so that those individuals can, you know, really be engaged in an area of interest for them, learn more about that particular sector, and then hopefully, you know, start to come to a conclusion on where they want to be, what their path is professionally. Reach Workforce Literacy, which I'm sure you're familiar with. DSU is looking to establish a cyber IT park in Sioux Falls, so we've set aside dollars for assistance for them to put a physical structure up as that sector continues to be more and more important among many sectors. Innovation Center of Excellence, we have created Diversity Equity and Inclusion Activator Series, which focuses on ways that businesses can learn more about D E and I and, you know, hopefully get them thinking about, you know, the future as it relates to diversity, equity, and inclusion. And then, every 10 to 12 years, Forward Sioux Falls puts aside dollars for a strategic plan, a long-range plan. So, Future Sioux Falls will engage both public and private entities to really determine what we feel as a community is in the best interest to continue to move our area forward from a long-range perspective. Again, Forward Sioux Falls, really that collaboration between public and private sectors, and really want to thank you as commissioners for agreeing to be an investor in Forward Sioux Falls. It's extremely important. And all of this really comes down to, and these are some of the slides that contain the accolades. This is really, you know, a big part of what the ROI we believe for Forward Sioux Falls is. And we're never going to take all the credit by any stretch, but we really feel that Forward Sioux Falls, over the last three-plus decades, has made a difference and will continue to be impactful for our community. Again, it's been widely communicated through the media, but number one, best small place for business and careers, 12 of the last 20. An exceptional place for entrepreneurs. And what's really striking about this particular slide is just the communities that we're compared against, which are significant. slide is just the communities that we're compared against, which are significantly larger than Sioux Falls. Number-one city in the U.S. for young professionals. And, you know, we really, not that young professional networks didn't exist before Forward Sioux Falls, but we were really the convener to kind of, you know, formulate one particular group of YPN, and now they're, they number 1,000 strong. Consistently a top-10 place to live by livability. So we encourage, even though we're, you know, we're coming off of the campaign, we're constantly looking for investors, new organizations that come to town, you know, those businesses that are expanding, we want you to become involved, and at that time, at this time, we would entertain any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mike. Any questions, comments? Commissioner Barth.
First of all, thank you for being here, and I think, obviously, your organization does a lot of great work. One of the things we need now, actually, is water. We don't need necessarily more jobs, because they're not going to come if they can't get water. And so we can use help in that area. We did a tour the other day, and we're at a dairy, and they're concerned about it. And going back to the public-private funding comparison, does the 30 million or whatever that you get from the TIF at Amazon go on the public side or the private side?
That's something that I'll, I could get back to you on.
Okay.
I could have a discussion with the Development Foundation on that, Commissioner Barth.
I'm sure it's not 30 million in one day either, but it is a significant amount.
I think the point of that screen, Commissioner, is that of the 16 million, 16.5 million raised, 79% came from the private side.
Correct. So if it comes from Amazon, is that private?
Yes.
Okay, so it should have been government money, though.
But this is 16 million, this is their fundraising. This is, that, you're talking apples and oranges.
Okay. I just wonder about the use of what should be public money to benefit your organization, which does good work, but I'd like to see more accountability on how that's being used.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, Mike. Appreciate you being here.
Let's say I have, we did a book a year and a half, two years ago, and some of you may have this, but I'll leave some copies with Carol. So thank you.
You bet. All right. Moving on, we have three presentations today. The second one will be by the Sioux Empire Fair. We recently had a fair, and it looks like it was a very successful venture, so. Morning, Scott.
Good morning, Scott Wick, with the Sioux Empire Fair, WH Lion Fairgrounds. I also have two board members present, Joe Beal and Art Nordstrom. And thank you for allowing us the time to present. Yes, we did have a very good fair. We didn't kick off the way we wanted to with our opening concert that night. The weather came in, and we had to pull the opener off the stage and cancel. So that was, that was tough to get through that night, but we did, as I said, we didn't start strong, but we finished very well. And of course, we have to thank all of our sponsors that support us. We've had all of these sponsors for many, many years now. We did add Smithfield. They took over the Monday. Billions transitioned to Thursday, and we lost, Runnings opted not to sponsor the main stage, but Billion Automotive did. So with all those partners, also you as the county commission, City of Sioux Falls, and everybody else that helped support us financially, equipment, services, we were, again, very blessed to have that moving forward. Special events, obviously Old Dominion, we've been working on for many, many years. So it just, it just didn't happen. The weather just changes, and that's, that's one of the risks of having an outdoor event in South Dakota. So that happened. And we had 9/11 survivor Joe Tarrell that did a speaking engagement on Wednesday, again, our annual Ag Appreciation Day luncheon. And Bill Zortman broadcasted live and interviewed folks out at the fair for a morning during the fair. Still being connected to the community, the Faith Temple Food Giveaway. And of course, the City of Sioux Falls does police car training and motorcycle training on the east parking lot for several weeks throughout the summer and also in the fall. Fairgrounds improvements, we continue to do more asphalting in our partnership with the city. And then I've also, I believe it's the next slide, other repairs. We had, the front porch was repainted and updated by some volunteers, and we had the damage to the roof was taken care of in a very quick fashion. I can't thank the commission enough for that. It was a two-week turnaround. Mark Krems was stellar in his work out there, and those guys, they were actually working into the dark a couple of days in the fair to get it done and buttoned up. If that hadn't happened, we would not have been able to have our commercial vendors that were in there.
Who was the roofer, Scott?
I don't want to misspeak, but they did a great job. I know he got a couple bins for some folks, but I'd have to ask Mark about that. But they were there up on the roof into the dark on that Friday night, for sure. Livestock did well again. We saw increases in numbers, a very big improvement. We had a water leak that Mark came out, and we came up with a solution for it. A group came in and redid the water supply in the open barn areas. It also supplied the wash rack. Been a big complaint for many years, because it just trickled out of there, but they had 80 pounds of pressure coming out of there, and they were excited to have that improvement. It's a little thing, but in the livestock business, it's important to them when they go wash and get their cattle ready to show. I'd take a drink here, excuse me. The Arts Center did well. We were upping all the numbers there. We're looking at improving that, maybe possibly moving that into the expo building where there's air conditioning, to get more traffic down that area, and maybe more people will come in due to the fact that it is air-conditioned, because when it's hot out, that arts building gets, it gets pretty muggy in there. Commercial and food vendors, the overall food vendors and commercial vendors overall was down, and it was due to staffing. Everybody that I talked, they said they wanted to bring all their booths. If, for instance, if they had four or five food booths they had, they might have been down to three or four. One group opted not to come at all, and when you follow up and talk to them, it was all because of staffing, they couldn't find the help. And visiting with those food vendors, it was, it was quite shocking at what they were paying per hour just to get people to work. And they feel that this is going to be a challenge moving forward, but the food vendors did very, very well, because we had a lot of people that came out to the fair, and they were out there in the food midway, in the carnival midway, the games, and they were, they were engaging more, and they were spending money, and they were enjoying themselves, because we did have very good weather despite Friday night. So when you look at the financials, our expenses this year were $686,000 total for entertainment. Our overall expenses were $1,062,960. We get to the income side of things. We didn't, I didn't compare any financials to 2020. About the only thing that we moved forward from 2020 was our protocols for COVID, for sanitation, for disinfecting, hand sanitizing, because that was just, that's the mulligan. That's the one you throw out. We made it through it. We thought we had a very successful year last year, but compared to 2019, when we did have a very good fair, we had big entertainment, our overall gross profit was up 5% compared to 19, and our expenses were down over 15%. And our income was up as far as a net profit last year, or this year, 2021, we had a net profit of $387,000. That's up $240,000 over 2019. So again, people were out, a lot of families, people were excited to come out, and they were very generous with their pocketbooks. And other than that, Friday, we had very, very favorable weather and just great support from the community. So we were very excited about 2021 and how we wrapped it up, and things are still moving strong through the fourth quarter for us as a property as a whole. And of course, we always have, entertainment is, we've submitted offers for entertainment for next year, and expanding on some areas, and just looking to the future on what we can do to keep providing a great venue, site, and entertainment, agricultural education and activities for the community, and carry on the reason why the Lion family donated the land. So with that, I would answer any questions.
Questions for Scott. Commissioner Abner.
Thanks, Scott. It was a great fair. I was out there at least one day. I don't even remember what, but the weather was beautiful. Normally, you have a population or admissions kind of an idea. Did you decide not to do that this year, or just, I know there's been some questions about the estimates in the past, and maybe that's the reason we just didn't put it in this year.
Well, what with, we continue to do our cyber seminars with the associations we belong to, and a lot of fairs are merging away from dwelling on attendance numbers. Just because you have a large attendance doesn't necessarily mean financial success. I kind of compare it to an auction. You can have 500 people at the auction that are just looking around, or you can have 100 people that are spending money. But we, our attendance was greater than it was in 19 by about 3.5%, 4%, and obviously much larger than last year. But our, all of our numbers financially, our attendance was positive except for beverages, beverage sales. And when you, when your biggest show doesn't go on the stage, that affects that. And the Joe Tarrell event on Wednesday was not a beverage crowd. It was, they were there to hear his message, and it was a great message.
Question for you. I know in the past, you had indicated that you have the option to buy insurance for different events, event insurance. And I know the, not having Old Dominion was a real disappointment after all the work you put into it. And I know a lot of people locally were really, really looking forward to getting to that concert. Was that one insured, or what was your, what'd you do there?
We had a contractual partnership with Pepper Entertainment as a producer. They were a partner. So for our obligation to that contract, we did have a, what we could afford for insurance, insurance to ensure those events. You can insure for rain or cancellation, and a certain number of hours, a certain amount of money. But we insured what we were comfortable investing in that. It was quite expensive. So we did have some insurance that helped kick in, but not near enough. But it was, we did get some good beverage sales in, coupled with the insurance and some other, some other help that was out there, lessened the sting quite a bit. So therefore, we did have a very good year, a very good fair.
Looks like we're good. Congratulations, and thank you.
Jeff, this is the first, sorry, this is the first time I presented, and you didn't have a question. Or a comment.
Just a quiet kind of guy.
And you didn't wear a fair shirt.
Well, let me say, I'll say something now. Thank you for what you do, and I hope to be out there more next year than this year, and I hope everybody else goes out there next year also.
Staffing was a challenge for us as well, so I could put you to work if you want to volunteer.
Volunteer? Maybe.
Okay. Well, thank you again on behalf of myself, my staff, our board, on everything that the county has supported us with. We look back to when my wife and I first took over, and then when I was hired to be the CEO, and, you know, we're in a great place. Appreciate everything you guys do, and great relationship with the city and all of our community leaders and businesses. So it's a very unique business, and it takes everybody to keep it moving forward. So we're excited moving forward and looking for next year. So thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. All righty. Moving on, we have Jessica Wells from Lifescape. Good morning.
Good morning. I realized, thank you for letting us come again. I was last here in March. So I've got a few updates, and when I received their presentation, it's the same one that you received in March, so I'm going to update you with just kind of what's happening now. So I guess I can do more of the arrows here. As you know, we started during a pandemic in the 1950s. The recent pandemic, we were able to adjust because we have, we had enough facilities that we were able to establish a quarantine site for our adult services. We owned a building that we were intending to sell on North Louise, but we were able to refit that into more a space where if people, adults, had tested positive for COVID or were suspected of being ill, we're able to move right away out there. Our greatest risk are our group homes. In those communal living settings, folks get sick and it spreads quite quickly. So we were able to implement a lot of testing quickly, if anyone was. We tested all the staff, tested all the individuals that lived in those, and then we're able to move folks out to really help contain that spread. In our children's services, we rented a site for our children that join us by just day school. We have about 60 children that come in from their buses, from their communities. And since they were out in the community, out with families, we were able to keep them in a separate space to limit that risk to the children who have complex medical needs, those that live residentially with us. With that, the school, we had some extra classrooms, so we were able to keep the school on the main level, and in the basement classrooms, we're able to set up some quarantine units for the children. We had one isolation area and a quarantine area. So we were able to really keep the children very healthy during the, during that pandemic. Our current vaccination rate, of course, we advocate for everyone eligible to get the vaccine. We are at about a 95% vaccination rate for the people that we support. That's primarily, well, 12 and older. And then at our staff, we're only at about 68%. So we struggle, like many organizations, to encourage our staff to be vaccinated. We do support over 4,000 children and adults from 62 of South Dakota's counties, and we support 40 different school districts. We primarily receive funding through Medicaid and home and community-based services for adult services. That is primarily dictated by our state legislature. We appreciate the support from counties, and then the foundation, we also implement operation or supplement operations. In Minnehaha County, we support 414 adults. And then in Lincoln County, 40. So those are our two largest counties for adult services. With our Children's Specialty Hospital and inpatient, it is primarily intensive rehab. Right now, it's typically a few-month stay, so children may receive, have a surgery or an illness, and supported by one of our area hospitals, they come to us for that rehab care before going home. In October, here's where some of our greatest challenges are lying. In October, we lost three nurses. We currently pay about $37 an hour for a nurse, and that is about the medium range by human resources surveys. Are the offers our nurses are getting are $72 an hour. The next week, it was $100 an hour, and the last one left for $120 an hour. For us, that's very unsustainable, so we can't compete with that. So we end up losing our nurses. We have lots of creative ways of recruiting. Currently, we have three infants on waitlists for our hospital. These children are on ventilators, so they need that intense nursing. So that is a challenge that we have. Without coming to our facility, they would either leave the state, which I'll come to a slide to that coming up, or they will remain in a full-service hospital, which is far more expensive than being able to come down to our, a lower level of care with us. Our intermediate care facility, which is our children's residential facility, we have a 96-bed license. We are able to support 60 children in our current setting, primarily because a lot of these children have challenging behaviors. Our facility built in the 1950s was to support four children per bedroom, with children with autism, challenging behaviors, one. If you have children and you have them share a room, that can be challenging even for kids that are related. You try to put kids who are not related together. So that makes us not able to serve as many children as we are licensed, and we currently have 17 children on our waitlist. Here's where we are feeling the most immediate crunch on staff. We have 25 open positions out of 70 on that unit. It is three residential units. And we have implemented mandatory overtime to help fill those shifts to meet our minimum staffing requirements, which is set in our licensure. We have, and we have started discharging children, because we're not able to care for them. What that means for those families in South Dakota is that they will be either sent home. Unlikely, we are one of the last stops. If school districts can't support a child during school, or families can't at home, if we're not able to support them, they will go to Redfield, which our state institution. They have actually said no more admissions into Redfield. They're full and don't have enough staff, so they're feeling the same crunch that we are. So then those children will be sent out of state, which is far more costly than being able to keep them. And then they don't have their families close for that continued care as well. To help combat this, we are, we have, just last Friday, heading into the holiday season is our tightest staffing every year. And going into Thanksgiving and Christmas, people, it's hard to get people to pick up extra shifts. So last Friday, we increased our wages for our direct support professionals to $20 an hour and have a $4,000 sign-on bonus. I've been with Lifescape for almost 19 years. I've never seen a sign-on bonus for direct support. Usually, it's our higher-level professional master's degree staffing positions, but we need folks who But we need folks who have compassionate hearts that care for, care for children and adults. Um, so that is what we're doing right now to help try to be competitive with all the other businesses that are looking for the, the same, um, level of staff. For a direct support professional, a high school diploma is the only requirement. We will do the additional training right in our facility for folks. So, um, probably the same thing you hear from other businesses across our community. Um, with our school, our specialty school, we have 91 children and day students. Um, just in September with the new school year, returned back to our 26th Street facility. So we were excited to be able to bring our staffing teams together and to have all those children back into the same building. Our outpatient clinics, we've got four of them, um, two in Sioux Falls, one in Rapid City and one in Sioux City. Um, this one, we've got 142 children on waitlist. So this is a large number. Most of them are on looking for autism evaluations and treatment. So, um, to treat a child with autism, if you can get them evaluated and into that applied behavior analysis by the time they're five, it will cost about $250,000 to $400,000 a year. If that child doesn't get that treatment and care early and consistently, it, that individual society will end up spending about 1.2 million per adult with autism to provide them the supports they need. Um, so good investment if we can catch kiddos when they're little. Um, but there again, our biggest reason for the waitlist are staffing. Um, with an autism evaluation needs a psychologist and then a board-certified behavior analyst and then RBTs help carry out those treatment plans. Um, there's a shortage of psychologists and the BCBA's across the nation. We have to recruit them in. Unfortunately, um, coming up, I'll talk a little bit about what we're doing to help solve that one. We have a for-profit, um, company with Lifescape called Rise Custom Mobility. Um, this one, we have been successful in recruiting our orthotheists from out of state because at this moment, Lifescape does not mandate a vaccine, um, vaccination. So, um, we have employees looking to us from, to come into South Dakota because our, our rules are rather relaxed around COVID. So, um, at this point, um, we were able to hire one more orthotheist for that company. Our Autism Child Development Center, this is where we do carry out most of our behavior programming in Sioux Falls. It's our fastest growing area. Um, to help, I mentioned, uh, needing more psychologists and more BCBA's, um, we are able to use our psychologists from Sioux Falls to help with autism evaluations in Rapid City through tele, telemedicine, which has been a good byproduct of the COVID pandemic. We have gotten much better at telether, teletherapy. Um, and then we are also partnering with the University of South Dakota with their School of Medicine to start a master's level program for individuals to become board-certified behavior analysts. Um, if you take a teacher or someone with an education degree or a social worker, um, anyone from the therapies, our typical folks who go into this program, um, you can add 40 to 80,000 onto their salary a year just by getting this two-year master's degree. And it's a high need, um, not only in South Dakota, but across the country. So economically for individuals, this is a great investment. Um, there are eight individuals who entered this cohort. It's very intense, so the classes are really small. And the great partnership here is Lifescape, um, board-certified behavior analysts and our psychologists are teaching the classes with USD staff. And then they also get to do their clinicals in the same location with the same program. It's the only program in the nation that couples both the classroom instruction with the clinical, um, components as well. So, um, we're very excited about that. They just started in September, so they'll be ready to go in a year and a half. We do family support services. This helps enable, um, children and adults to stay longer with their families, um, and provides supports and funding for that. We've got a Pathways to Life specialty school. This is our, um, individuals who are getting ready to transition into adult services. Supported employment, um, our folks during the pandemic, a lot of them weren't able to work when things shut down, but they're excited to get back, um, into their, uh, businesses that they work with and get back to their coworkers. So that program is, um, up and going again. Adult day services, um, we have a waitlist of 12 adults right now on our, uh, waiting for services. They live either independently or with their families that wish to have just that day, um, recreation and, um, different activities to do. During the pandemic, we provided, we had a waiver to be able to provide day services in the homes so that we weren't congregating large amounts of people into our Western Avenue facility. Um, we took the opportunity to update the facility and make it more welcoming and better activities for folks. So we were able to add a gym, um, a couple of pool tables and foosball, um, a recreation area just in then, we are in the process of turning a green space into some gardens and an outdoor basketball area and picnic shelter. So excited, uh, people are excited to get back and to see their friends. Um, during the last legislative session, so in March, we had put a request to our legislature to help increase funding, um, for our direct support professionals. They did allocate some additional funding for adult services that helps stabilize that workforce some. We still average about 1,500 hours open a week. Um, to us, that's stable, which is a little bit scary, but, um, it's still, we have enough staff willing to pick up extra shifts that we, um, don't feel in crisis in the adult services, um, direct support at this moment. And then we have some of those folks coming into children's to help out in that area. Um, and we were able to increase the wages from $13 an hour to $15 an hour and then, um, hope to get to 1,775 by January. Adult residential, we've got 39 homes. Um, we have 49 people who would like to, um, come into our residential services. So the 49 people on waitlist there, um, we are fortunate to receive significant federal funding through the South Dakota Housing Trust Fund and then some state funding through the South Dakota Opportunity, um, Housing Fund. And we were able to build a continuum home, which opened in February of 2021. Eight individuals live in that home. And then we are about to open a Linden, which is up on North Fourth. Um, that one will open in January of 2022, another eight individuals. And then we have, uh, construction will begin this spring on Magnolia, which is over, um, by Marion, um, on Ebenezer. And these houses are replacing existing houses, um, that we already have. Continuum was new. It was for, um, young adults transitioning into adult services. So excited to offer some, um, one of our goals is dignity, um, having people live in, in homes that they're proud of, um, spaces that they're proud of. And even, we just looked at some of our, our facilities and said, no, I wouldn't want, I wouldn't want to live there. I wouldn't want my children to live there. I wouldn't want my parent to live there. Um, so we are able to replace those, which we're excited. That's a, been a bright spot in our year. Um, over 300 individuals, um, have complex, uh, diagnosis. One-fourth of them have three or more diagnosis. So we're not talking about just one, um, one issue, several. Um, we talked about if children, um, are not provided care in Sioux Falls, they are being sent to Denver or to Omaha or to Minneapolis. So if you're a family member that needs intensive therapy, um, that is economically probably not very feasible for you to be close to your child during those. So our Autism Child Development Center is been going very strong. Um, there again, it could continue to grow beyond the space we have available with 142 children on the waitlist. Um, we've got, um, we added a traumatic brain injury specialist for individuals who are in car accidents or have, um, that type of injury. The next care you can receive is in Denver. So keeping that care close, um, to folks who live in South Dakota. And our USD, um, partnership is also one of our highlights of the year too. I think that might be my last one. Okay. Um, any questions about what's happening at Lifescape?
Great presentation, Jessica, and thank you. And I mean, everybody there. My daughter worked for a while while she's in college and it's, you have to have a passion for what you do and, and thank everybody that's there.
I will.
And you have to compensate them too.
Yes, we're working on that, um, as best as we can.
Commissioner Hybarger's interested in going back into nursing after she heard your numbers.
Yeah, what am I doing?
So, thank you. Commissioner Barth?
Question or two. Have you had a big staff turnover in other departments besides nursing?
Um, yes. So our staff turnover rate right now is 38%, which is actually better than it was in March. Um, we were at about 46% in March. Um, I think that our professional services, um, the therapies, the occupational speech and physical therapy have been pretty steady. Um, the same amount of openings have kind of been there. Um, nursing, of course, if you look at what's happening in our hospital systems, the, the strain on healthcare in this last year, I think is driving those nursing numbers. Um, psychology and autism services has always been, um, high. There just aren't enough of them. And, but we're seeing the pressure on our direct support professionals is probably where our percentage is, is the highest turnover rate. Um, and that is just because those individuals could work out, we're finding folks that go to Walmart or, um, Amazon coming in is a bit nerve, nerve-wracking because, um, they're gonna be looking for the same folks that do that, um, other work. And it's, it's hard work. Um, you have to have a heart for it and, and want to do more than just work for your paycheck for the money, so.
Mr. Chairman? I do remember when the number was in the high 40s, in fact, year after year. Do other states and similar businesses have the same issue?
They do, yes. Um, we just received a presentation that was a survey of assisted care and long-term care facilities, which our children's services is on the edge of that. Um, adult services definitely would be considered a, a longer-term care. Um, and right now, 78% of them are contemplating closing across the nation. I don't know if you have anyone in, um, long-term care, um, but the thought of that many, um, long-term care facilities closing is something we are constantly observing, which is why we've had to discharge, start the discharge process for two children, just because we, um, need to kind of get it to the right size of being able to support them well.
Mr. Chairman, finally, let me ask you about transportation. I am the UDC Urbanized Development Commission and we make some decisions regarding transportation. Is, how is that working for you guys?
Um, so for adult services, um, having more transit routes would always be helpful. Um, we've got our fleet of vehicles, we have 121 vehicles. Um, they drive, I think we, they said we spend about 17,000 a month in gas. Um, and that's during the pandemic, so we were not driving places, um, very often. But we also have outreach vehicles that go into the, across the state as well. But transportation, um, is one of the more limiting factors for individuals to be able to engage with their community. So that, um, and a lot of our adults take public transport. So when we're looking at establishing a new house, um, a new location, um, we are always looking to put it on a, on a bus route, just because that enables our folks to be more independent and not have to rely on, um, staff or we've encouraged, um, churches and places where our folks, um, attend church, um, to see if someone can kind of be their church buddy and, and help people get to church and to other activities like that.
Thank you.
All righty. Thank you again.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, um, more business, I guess. Uh, look for a motion. We had an auction. Go ahead, Steve.
Good morning, Commissioner Steve Groh, Highway Superintendent. Back on August 24th, the board took action declaring certain equipment and vehicles as surplus and authorized the disposition of those through auction with Purple Wave Auction. Fred Konecsky, our fleet supervisor, worked with Purple Wave and I am pleased to report that we realized just over $139,000 on selling of these assets. We were, had no real clue how high they were going to go. We were hoping to get in the mid-50s. Today, we're looking for your approval to move these funds to the Highway and Bridge Fund. And upon this, we will work with the Auditor's Office to coordinate removal of these assets from our inventory, including insurance.
Make a motion to move the funds to the Highway Bridge Fund.
Motion in a second. Discussion, roll call vote, please.
Hybarger?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye, motion carries. I know we want to buy something.
Yes, sir. And it is budgeted for our 22 budget. Uh, today we're looking for approval to purchase a mini excavator through the National Sourcewell Contract for about $67,000. This would be used for a variety of excavation and maintenance items. It'll be more efficient for placing where perhaps been working on streams. We'll be able to use it out at the cemetery for digging graves. We, uh, demoed several products earlier this year and this is the product that seemed to work the best for our staff. Hank Crumble, our operations manager, and Fred, our fleet supervisor, are here to answer any specific questions you may have regarding this equipment. But this is, this was budgeted for the 22 budget with a lead time. We're just looking for approval to start the process now with anticipation of a January delivery.
Commissioner Hybarger?
Make a motion to prove, and I'd also note that we just sold enough stuff that this is more than paid for.
So we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second by Barth. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose same sign.
Thank you.
Make it a good one.
Thank you, guys.
All right. Consider a motion to authorize sheriff's office to purchase a jail transport vehicle. Mr. Mattson?
Good morning, Mike Mattson from the
Mr. Jordan?
Um, we're requesting authorization to purchase a, a transport vehicle from state bid. We budgeted it in our 2021 budget. So just seeking that authorization.
And make a motion to allow the jail to buy this vehicle for $33,484.
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. We have a new vehicle. All righty.
Thank you.
Um, we're looking at an option. We're gonna have a briefing on how we may change how the commission does business a little bit. Good morning, Melinda. We, consent agenda is used by numerous governing bodies, city council included, so this would just be a slight change to how we move things forward, I guess.
Good morning, Melinda Storley, Commission Office. Um, there is no action requested here. This is just a briefing in hopes that you would consider, um, taking a close look at this option for us to be able to follow. Um, our agenda currently colludes various items within the routine or the first section of the agenda. Some are quickly approved without discussion and some are discussed at length. Uh, the question here is, would you find it practical to streamline the agenda process by eliminating the time spent on individual motions, approving, uh, various routine items that don't require discussion and to reallocate this time to the items that do require discussion and deliberation? So we are looking for your input and direction in moving forward with this proposal. Uh, the consent agenda is a part of the meeting agenda where various items are grouped and approved in one action instead of making multiple motions for individual, for individual approval. Simple questions for clarification would be allowed, but lengthy discussion would be discouraged as it would undermine the efficiency of the consent agenda process. All supporting documents associated with the consent, consent agenda items would be provided to the commissioners for review in advance of the meeting to ensure that all, um, all are informed of the issues that will be passed as a group. Uh, the consent agenda will consist of non-controversial items that do not require any action. Um, it wouldn't be used, um, to force the approval of an item through a process that eliminates their review. The board members or a member of the public will have an opportunity to remove an item from the consent agenda to the meeting agenda for briefing or further discussion. Prior to approving the agenda, the chair would ask if anyone would like to discuss any item on the consent agenda. If an item is determined to require discussion, it would be moved to the bottom of the agenda preceding the liaison reports and addressed individually along at the, with the regular meeting items. I did include a sample agenda for you to take a look at, um, with my memo and made little notes on where, where an item would have sat and where it would be moved to. Um, the consent agenda will have a heading and it will have an explanation of how the commission board is going to move on these items. Did anyone have any questions on that, um, sample agenda?
You made a comment, I just want to clarify if I could, um, that obviously if a commissioner wanted to take something off the consent agenda, it could be moved, but you had made a comment about the public.
Uh, I, this was something that we discussed with Eric from the State's Attorney's Office.
Okay.
And it was under his recommendation that we include that within that, but I don't know specifically why.
So that being said, I mean, how would the public, would we have to move public comment to the beginning of the meeting? Is that, I mean, how would the public ask for something to be removed from the consent agenda to the regular agenda?
Mr. Chairman, Eric Bog for State's Attorney's Office.
Mr. Chairman, Eric Bog from State's Attorney's Office. The concept of allowing the public to request an item to be withdrawn from the consent calendar, I'm gonna continue to call it consent calendar probably for the rest of my life. That's the legislative verbiage rather than the consent agenda. Same thing. The, is that, the process of, again, the public allowing that to, or having the public have that option is not universal. And so it certainly is up to this board to determine whether or not they would like the public to have that option. I think the theory behind it is that if the public's not aware that they want to have some further input or discussion on that item, they may not realize that until actually the start of a meeting or the day before a meeting, which prevents them on some rational level to be able to approach a particular commissioner to make that request for them. And they may actually not have a commissioner willing to make that request for them. So that's the theory behind it, certainly not mandatory. But as far as public comment is concerned, there really wouldn't be public comment per se, it's just a request that an item be removed. You would have to allow that opportunity if that's what you're going to adopt for procedural issues. The process in state law to require public comment does not place that on any particular place on the agenda. We've always placed it in the same particular spot on our agendas, historically speaking, but it could be at the beginning, it could be at the end, it could be two-thirds, one-third. It's just, it's a matter of where you want it to be. The comment, it wouldn't necessarily be at the time that a request for withdrawal from the consent calendar happens. That would come at the time that item is addressed, as Melinda's already pointed, at the bottom of the agenda if it's pulled, so.
So procedurally, the consent agenda would take a motion in a second and then comments from commissioners and include the public if somebody wanted to stand up to address an item on the consent agenda. Is that what I'm understanding?
Right, so if it's pulled from the consent calendar and dropped to the bottom of today's action calendar, then, then when that item comes up, then you would have a regular presentation like you would for many other regular business item and then allow an opportunity to, if the public was the item, or the individual from the public is the one that withdrew it from the consent calendar, allow them to have some input or make comments.
Okay. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
That's how it works for the Planning Commission. We have the agenda and we go through it, and if someone wants an item held out and brought to the regular agenda, I mean, we don't ask for a reason, we just put it on the regular agenda. In the meantime, there might be seven items that get approved without any, any motions, discussions, or whatever. And you never know what's going to be held out, and the crowd in the room can ask for it, or the commissioners can ask for it. If it's brought to the regular agenda, then the staff does their full presentation and then we act on it.
Any other questions from Melinda or comments about adopting this practice, I guess, this method of doing business? Any discussion? I mean, we're not looking for any specific action, but it would be something that we could change. Commissioner?
Is it something that you are planning to bring back at a future commission meeting? Or is this, you're gonna think about it and we're gonna think about it, and then we'll decide if we're bringing it back?
Uh-huh.
Maybe that's where we're at.
You know, I think it would be, yeah, something good to talk about again, but this is the first introduction to it. And, yeah, it's mostly procedural more than anything, so I think to bring it back would be a good idea to include it. Well, nobody, we don't have a full commission here again for several weeks, so maybe on the next time we have, and we can add it as a, an action item, and we can have discussion and...
Just so you're aware, some of the items that had fallen under the routine, under the routine business would have been a human resource item regarding a special commission action. The planning and zoning items that are typically a notice are now gonna be a first reading and notice of hearing, so that would fall down. The petition for compromise of lien would fall down into the regular agenda items. I did speak with the directors of planning, equalization, and human resource, and none of them were opposed to how their items would move and don't believe that they would have been negatively affected by having been moved to the regular area.
I could see where it would free up some staff time from having to be here unless the commission wanted, commissioner wanted them here, so.
The last time we used a consent agenda was March twenty-eighth, twenty-seventeen, and the reason we used it was to manage forty-one abatements for approval. And then we had four abatements for denial that wound up at the bottom in the regular items.
We'll be talking about it again. Thank you for bringing it and making it, putting it on paper so we could see what it would look like.
Please let me know if you have any ideas you'd like me to jot down or configure or whatever for the future.
Perfect.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your work. All righty. Liaison reports. Commissioner Barth?
We had a very mild meeting last night, although there was an issue that we could not resolve immediately, and we deferred action on a storage facility in Rowena, which would potentially cause additional runoff to an area that's unprepared for runoff. There's, the ditches are silted in, the slope isn't right, the culverts are not right. So we deferred for a month. There's a dispute as to whether it's, should be maintained by the township or by the neighborhood. And in the discussion, honestly, there was talk about streets that no longer exist, that apparently at one time there was a public right-of-way for Roberts Street. Well, it doesn't exist except in some arcane record. Anyway, we deferred that one, but Scott Anderson, our planning director, brought up a pos, a posul to sell eligibility's. Some of our eligibility's become moot when, for example, Foundation Park killed off sixteen eligibility's. So Scott's thought would be that we would sell one, two, three a year to be placed in other parts of the county. It's not to overburden the county with more residences, but it would be something to allow... Well, there's a ten-acre plot over, off of, near Renner, where the owner owned it as a stable and lived within walking distance. Well, since then, she built a new house, moved away, but there is no building eligibility for that ten-acre lot. There's an existing horse shed. Anyway, there's things like that all over the county, and I don't know if you guys, like me, get calls periodically from people that, you know, I bought twelve acres and I'd like to build a, you know, a house and I don't have an eligibility. We had another one, actually, where the person wanted to build a bed and breakfast. And so they were going to build a separate house on their property. But actually, what they were trying to do was let their son move in there to help take care of dad who had dementia, and we didn't approve it.
Are these eligibility's owned by the county?
They just were...
Dissolved. There are, they just don't exist anymore.
And, and there's, we approved a small, light industrial thing in Corson where there's an existing house. That, that eligibility will be extinguished. They will not be able to build another house there, and they're not gonna use it. They can't, I mean, the quarry doesn't want it, the railroad people don't want it. And so, anyway, there, there's a number of these that have accumulated, and again, it would be, this is certainly not a final thing or in any way. It's not ready to be brought forward yet. Certainly, the state's attorney is aware of some of these things. But since it was brought up last night, I thought I would bring it up today.
All righty. You heard it here first. Okay. Any, any other liaison reports? Moving on to new business, I do have one piece of new business. If you get this to Commissioner Barth and pass this down there. It was suggested by Carol Muller that a letter be sent to Representative Dusty Johnson regarding some very recent legislation that would basically make it easier to spend ARPA funds. Carol, you wanna fill in the blanks?
Chairman, thank you very much. As you're aware, ARPA funds, which is the American Rescue Plan Act, Minnella County has thirty-seven point five million dollars that it will be awarded, or it has been awarded by the federal government. And that comes with restrictions on how you can go through and spend that. Last week, the Senate, with a voice vote, unanimously passed Senate Bill Thirty-Eleven, that's how this is being referred to, instead of its long title, it's Thirty-Eleven, that would provide flexibility on how you could go through and spend this money. And the first part of it is that ten million dollars of the thirty-seven point five would be treated as income that was revenue that was lost. We did not have lost revenue last year, but instead that would give us flexibility. And the, there's a lot of options that exist on that, that we would not have to follow otherwise. That provides us a lot of options to do things for the county, within the county, that we felt the need to go through and do, again, it's one-time funds for us. The other thing it allows is that then that thirty percent of the money, thirty, or thirty, thirty percent of what's left, is how I'm understanding it at this point, then, could be used on infrastructure. So somewhere between eleven and eighteen million dollars now becomes available for you to spend with flexibility that you did not have before. I was not aware this bill passed in front of the Senate until we got the word from NACO late Thursday, early Friday, that this had happened. And have gotten on the calls yesterday, there's another call late today about it. They anticipate that this may go quickly. And so that's why, brought the letter of support to, for you to consider sending to Representative Dusty Johnson, asking for his support. It's not asking for any more money, it's simply asking for flexibility.
And Carol asked me to sign this, and I said I'm reluctant to sign as a chair without your awareness of this letter, so, you know, if you have any comments or input.
I'd make a motion to demand that you sign it.
I don't think we can do that, but yes.
I'm certainly fully supportive of the decision.
I'm, I'm supportive.
Okay. Thank you, Carol. All righty. Any other new business? Any old business? Look for a motion to go to recess.
That's my motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are at recess till ten-thirty.